Are you ready, Jeremy? You ready? Okay. I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order for Tuesday, January 26th. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Paul. Trustee Kubaki.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal is excused. Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of our home, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Williams, a second by Trustee Flukie, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open and closed minutes from December 15th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Gary Paul, seconded by Jay Krieger. To approve those minutes, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Motion to approve the Village Board's special meeting minutes from January 12th.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Jay Krieger, seconded by Gary Paul, to approve those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda, must state your name and address, limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Any comments from the public, items not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Number seven, we have promotion of public safety supervisors. Chief.
All right, I'm gonna stand over here, I think, where everybody can kinda see me. So it is truly my honor. This is one of the most favorite parts of my job, is to be able to promote highly talented people within the organization. With the retirement of Deputy Chief Randy Tous, we had some promotions to make. So we had promotions of a lieutenant, a captain, a commander, and a deputy chief. So would you all come forward, please? Jeff? Right? Wade? Brian? Nick? Few of these have done this before, but, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna go with this. I'm just gonna read a little bit about each one of them. I will say that the promotional process was a little bit different than what everyone is used to. I tried to do as much as I could to not only learn about these individuals within the organization, but to see if they truly have what it took to be in these positions. And as you know, leadership positions are very difficult, especially within a public safety organization. So there's lots to manage in that organization. So with that said, we'll start with Jeff. Jeff Panzier. He was born and raised on a family farm here in Brown County. I will say that growing up in Iowa, my grandparents owned a farm, so I spent a few summers on the farm. It is not easy work, and I think some of the folks here kinda kid him a little bit because he's got farm strength, or farm muscles. So you know he's worked a little bit during his day, when these people start recognizing and teasing him a little bit about his strength. But farmers are great people, hardworking people. Prior to joining us, Jeff worked as a full-time police officer with the city of Green Bay and a volunteer firefighter with the town of Ledgeview. Jeff received his associate's degree in criminal justice from NWTC, where he graduated with honors. He was hired as a public safety officer in 2015, became a field training officer in 2019, and on January 7th of 2021, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. So congratulations to Jeff. Wade Groll, next to Jeff, here. Wade, well, prior to coming to public safety, we would like to thank you for your service as a member of the United States Marine Corps. So very much appreciate your service. He was in the reserve unit as a military police officer. Before coming to us, he was a deputy with Portage County Sheriff's Office and a volunteer firefighter with the town of Whiting Fire Department. Wade has been a public safety officer for 17 years. During this time, whoa, sorry, guys. Duty calls. Off they go. During this time, Wade has become a paramedic, a field training officer, and he is a certified firearms instructor. Wade was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in 2007, and on January 7th, 2021, he was promoted to the rank of captain on B shift. Congratulations. Brian Murphy. Brian served 16 years as an officer with the following departments: UW Oshkosh, UW Milwaukee Police Department, West Milwaukee Police Department, and with Eschewabunan. He's also worked four years as a part-time firefighter EMT with the Menominee Falls Fire Department. Brian was hired in Eschewabunan in 2015. In the last five years, he has become a paramedic, a member of the Brown County Field Force Team, and explorer post advisor. Brian was promoted to lieutenant in 2019 and a captain in 2020, and in 2021, January 5th, he was promoted to commander. Congratulations, Brian. I'm not sure which one of these two flew through the ranks quicker, but we'll let you decide here. Nick Kozloski has served for 14 years as an officer. Prior to coming to us, he was a patrol officer for five years with the Appleton Police Department. Throughout his nine years with us, he has become a paramedic, a field training officer. And according to this, Angie, he has excelled and climbed the ranks quickly. Nick was promoted to shift lieutenant in 2019, commander in 2020, and on January 5th, 2021, promoted to the deputy chief. So congratulations. So, so, as not to make anyone too nervous, I will have all of the people that are coming up to pin the badges to come up at once, so we can do this all together. Come on up. I should have Amanda, and Barbara, and Wayne, and Ralph, and Amy all up here, right? Well, we're missing one. All right. Feel free to pin it on them, and, you know, if you stick them, Mary said we have a paramedic close by, so we're good.
Don't worry, nobody's looking at you either.
I think Amy won. She's done it before. Also to honor them are, one of our paid-on-call firefighters and EMTs, they made plaques for them as well, so.
Congratulations, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us.
You can all stay if you want. Bye, Heidi. All that was fun. It's always nice to get promotions. Okay. So, under written communications and announcements, I do have an announcement that I wanted to say. I have been appointed to the League's Advisory Committee on Legislation. So I have my first meeting this Friday morning. It will be a Zoom meeting, but I will keep everybody updated as to what's going on with that, and if anybody has anything they would like to have me talk to the League about, just let me know, and we'll move on from there. So. Anybody else have any written communications? Okay. Number nine, action on the consent agenda. The operators licenses, the action on the change of agent for Dave and Buster's of Wisconsin, Inc., DBA Dave and Buster's, investment report, budgeted expenditures, and department reports. Does anybody have anything pulled, or do you wanna just make a motion to approve?
Move to approve the action.
Move to approve.
So we have a motion by Trustee Paul, seconded by Jay Krieger, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, 10A, Public Hearing Regarding Ordinance Number 01-1-21, Revising the Home Occupation Requirements, Section 17-4-400, Parent C, Parent 1, Parent H, Eschewabunan Municipal Code. Would any, I will let Aaron talk to this.
Sure, just a quick overview of the proposed action or request. We have a listing of home occupations within this section of the code, and within the language of the code, before the listing, it lists the following home occupations includes but is not limited to the following. This has resulted in really kind of an opening up of home occupations. I'm looking to eliminate the "but is not limited to" language to just identify those listed home occupations as allowable, and then if someone has another home occupation they'd like to participate in, that that would actually come through Plan Commission and Village Board for ordinance amendment separately.
Okay. Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this item? Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this item, since this is a public hearing? Is there anybody who would like to speak for this? Anybody who would like to speak for this? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Williams, seconded by Trustee Krieger, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10B is a public hearing regarding ordinance 01-3-21, Amending the Bay Park Square Planned Unit Development, PUD, ordinance for proposed Steinhoffels Furniture signage. Aaron.
The request came through from Steinhoffels, as they're taking over the former Yonkers Building. They'll be taking over one half of the first floor and all the second floor. Because Yonker, the former Yonkers Building was part of the original PUD governing the design and uses within the mall property, Steinhoffels is subject to those rules as well. The proposed PUD amendment would allow for some signage for Steinhoffels, as indicated on the packet, as well as signage for a future tenant, to be determined yet, for the other one half of the first floor. So the proposed signage is consistent with other signage within the area, and I guess I'll address anything else during this action item.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this item? Anybody here who'd like to speak against this item? Anybody here who'd like to speak for this item? Anybody who'd like to speak for this item? I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Gary Paul, seconded by Allison Williams, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10C, Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 01-2-21, Regarding Proposed Revisions to Site Plan and Design Review Requirements, Section 17-2-200, Eschewabunan Municipal Code. Aaron.
The Village Site Plan Review Committee requested Village staff to take a look at the site plan review requirements, as they currently stand, for requiring the use of fully concealed fasteners on metal wall panels. The request is to take a look at allowing what are called semi-concealed fasteners for metal wall panels. In reviewing that, I knew that the Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission, for that matter, did not want to open up the village for the use of semi-concealed fasteners. So the proposed amendment does allow for limited use of semi-concealed fasteners on metal wall panels on non-street-facing elevations of existing buildings within the I-1 light industry, I-2 heavy industry, and IP industrial park zoning districts. So you would still not see any exposed fasteners, say, on Oneida Street, in the commercial areas, things like that.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this item? Anyone here who'd like to speak against this item? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak for this item? Anyone here who'd like to speak for this item? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Flukie, a second by Trustee Krieger, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 11, action items. 11A, Discussion and Action Regarding Ordinance Number 01-1-21, Revising the Home Occupation Requirements, Section 17-4-400, Parent C, Parent 1, Parent H, Eschewabunan Municipal Code. Aaron.
Okay. As mentioned during the public hearing, this is to amend the language to strike the "but is not limited to" when it comes to home occupations, due to creating really kinda gray areas for administration of the code. Plan Commission did recommend approval at their meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Aaron?
No, this, this recommendation makes a lot of sense. It clarifies things, and with that, if we do have a situation that is unusual, it can be brought back to the Plan Commission and the Village Board for discussion, debate, and modification as appropriate. So, that being said, I would make a motion to approve this ordinance, 01-1-21, Amending Section 17-4-400, Parent C, Parent 1H, of the Eschewabunan Municipal Code, removing "but is not limited to."
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Kubaki, a second by Trustee Paul, to approve ordinance number 01-1-21. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Going to bed better, Steve.
I hope I didn't step on your toes there.
11B, Action Regarding Ordinance Number 01-3-21, Amending the Bay Park Square Planned Unit Development Ordinance for Proposed Steinhoffels Furniture Signage. There, and signage.
Lot of FaceTime tonight. As discussed during the public hearing, this is for the proposed Steinhoffels and the former Yonkers Building, to accommodate their proposed signage. The proposed signage, as identified in the packet, is consistent with what you see other stores within the area. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, and I should mention the Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission both recommended approval of the PUD amendment.
Any questions?
Aaron, I just have a quick question. On the west elevation, over the doors to it, does it say superstore there? Is that what it says down low? It's just hard to read.
Yes, superstore, furniture and mattress superstore.
Down low, over the pedestrian type?
Oh, over the pedestrian. Didn't bring my cheaters with me, I'm sorry.
I know, I can't read it either. Take Doug's.
Thanks, Doug. Yes, it does say superstore. I'm sorry, it says Stein.
Oh, Steinhoffel?
Yeah. Future tenant. That's the east elevation. On the west elevation, it says superstore.
Okay, and then east elevation would be the new tenant or the proposed tenant?
That, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And is there, is this new sign request over what our code says? And if so, because it sounds like there's three signs allowed per building?
Right. On our standard code, we do allow administratively two wall signs. Otherwise, they can't get a third wall sign through Special Site Plan Review Committee approval. In this case, this is considered a multi-tenant store, because there are two proposed tenants in here. So there's some additional flexibility that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for the assist.
Like Aaron said, it went through Site Plan Committee. I give Aaron a lot of credit for putting this together, because there was issues on sizing, and between him and Steinhoffels, they did a good job in making it work to fit our ordinances. Also, it's a good fit for our community to get this box store filled and make use of the footage that we've got, so. There's no other questions. I'll move to approve the Bay Park Development Ordinance proposed for Steinhoffels Furniture signage.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Gary Paul, seconded by Steve Kubaki, to approve ordinance number 01-3-21. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11C, Discussion and Action on Ordinance Number 01-2-21, Regarding Revisions to Site Plan and Design Review Requirements, Section 17-2-200, Eschewabunan Municipal Code. Aaron.
As discussed during the public hearing, the proposed amendment is to allow the limited use of semi-concealed fasteners for metal wall panels within our three industrial zoning districts, the IP, I-1, and I-2 zoning districts. In addition to that, there's some additional proposed language changes, kinda cleanup to address some items that were interpreted in the past, put those into the code to make it clear, to avoid any kind of, I guess, misinterpretations. I wanna make sure that when development community comes to Eschewabunan, they can look at our site plan review requirements, be very clear what is expected, and where we can work with them. Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission did recommend approval of the proposed changes at their respective meetings.
Okay. I have a question. Aaron, on the top of page five, it talks about no bushes or shrubbery, nor any opaque or semi-opague object, and then new verbiage is including private signet? Is that supposed to be signage, or is signet something that I don't understand exactly what you mean?
That should be signage, correct.
Okay, great. The other thing to maybe consider in the, in the future, and I don't know if it's appropriate to mention here, but with the landscaping, I know we have pretty extensive landscaping for all of our properties that go in, one of the things that seems to happen is all the landscaping goes in, and then a year down the road, or two years down the road, no one's taking care of it. And it would be nice sometime in the future, and I know it's not tonight, but to really look into that and see if there's some more teeth we could put in to require more upkeep and maintenance of the landscaping that we're requiring them to put in.
I can discuss that with Tim, Tim Bachnett, and we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Okay. There was, this'll really help at site plan with the concealed fasteners, the non-concealed fasteners. It's been a big issue. So this language will really help.
This has been an issue for a long time, being on the committee for a long time. This came up a number of times, and, you know, we just didn't have the right verbiage in it, thanks to Aaron cleaning that up for us. So we understand it better, and we've, we've done some damage on some customers that were wanting to come into our village, and because of the, of the language, we lost them. So I think it was a good move that we went in, looked at this, and took care of it as needed to make it feasible for everybody to understand. So if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the request for the change in the ordinance to clean up the language.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Gary Paul, a second by Steve Kubaki, to approve ordinance number 01-2-21. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11D, Action on Class A Beer/Class A Liquor License Request for Vanderheiden Liquor LLC, DBA Village Liquor and Wine. The, well, it was initiated by Pat Moynihan when he was the clerk. This is actually to transfer the liquor license from Joyce Herman to Tom Vanderheiden. This was approved, I believe it was unanimous at Public Works.
At Public Works, we discussed it and approved it unanimously.
Okay. Any questions?
Is there, is there any issue with Mr. Vanderheiden having a OWI two and a half years ago? Was that a problem at all with this type of license? Or any, any problem on that?
That was brought up, I know, at the committee level, but they did not have a problem with it. Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you wanna, could you, you would have to come in. I need a motion to, well, no, I don't need a motion to open the floor, because it's an action item. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joyce Herman, the owner of Village Liquor and Wine right now, 3106 Alfred Mill Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin. So this is a transfer.
Could you talk into the, thank you.
This is a transfer of license from Village Liquor and Wine, Inc. to Vanderheiden LLC. The effective date of that, we are actually closing February 23rd, so I don't know what that, if that can be, if that's noted somewhere, or, because we applied for the license, or he did, but we didn't have a closing date set at that time.
Okay, does that, there's no problem?
No.
No, there would be no issues with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Trustee Kubaki, seconded by Trustee Williams, to approve this transfer of license. All those in favor, say aye.
No.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. 11E, Action on Class B Beer/Class B Liquor License for Boomerang Stadium Holdings LLC, DBA Capital Credit Union Park. Again, this one says the initiator is Pat Moynihan, but this is a transfer of the liquor license for the baseball stadium from Big Top to Boomerang. So, any questions about that? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Class B liquor license moving to Boomerang from Big Top.
Second. Yeah, I have a motion by Trustee Krieger, seconded by Trustee Williams, to approve the Class B beer/Class B liquor for Boomerang Stadium Holdings, DBA Capital Credit Union Park. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11F, Action on Requested Site Plan Review for Exterior Improvements at Fresenius Kidney Care, 2240 Holmgren Way, Parcel VA-89-6. Aaron.
The requested site plan is for, as President Kardowski mentioned, Fresenius Kidney Care Dialysis Clinic. This is the former Green Bay Blue Building on Holmgren Way, so it was converted into a dialysis clinic. Relatively minor exterior improvements. The primary improvements include repaving, striping the parking lot, as well as extending the parking lot in the rear of the building a bit. Otherwise, it's just touch-ups here and there, a couple, some new signage, and also including a dumpster enclosure. Because the property is zoned Village Center, VC, it is subject to review by Plan Commission and Village Board, in addition to Site Plan Review Committee, with ultimate approval by the Village Board. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I think this is a good use for that building, and that building is sat vacant for quite some time, and I think it, there's some synergy of providing businesses like this who can support everything else that we have from a commercial basis here, so I think it's a good addition, and if that's as recommended by Aaron, I would make. And if that is recommended by Erin, I would make that motion to approve.
And I would second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Kabakie, seconded by Trustee Krieger, to approve the requested site plan review for exterior improvements on Parcel VA-89-6. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 11G, Action Regarding Requested Site Plan Review for Merge Urban Development Building Number One at 680 Block Mike McCarthy Way, Parcels VA-54-2 and VA-55-A. Erin.
Okay, the requested site plan review is actually within the Sports Entertainment, or SE, district, which then again does require review and approval by the Village Board, as well as a Plan Commission recommendation. The proposal by Merge, as you can see up on the screen, is for a five-story mixed-use building, primarily masonry with some storefront windows in the front. This is more of an L-shaped building. If you look at the site plan, you can see the courtyard in the middle. Towards the east of the building is a future climbing gym. The exterior for that was not quite ready for submittals, so that'll be submitted at a separate time for review and approval by Site Plan Review Committee, Plan Commission, and Village Board. In terms of uses, we're looking at 88 multifamily units. The climbing gym will be 12,000 square feet. On the proposed building you see before you, we'll also have 3,100 square feet of commercial uses on the first floor. The building is again to front on Mike McCarthy Way, kind of kicking off that, the redevelopment of that property that the Village CDA has had for a number of years. As noted on the screen, exterior materials again are a mixture of masonry storefront windows and aluminum window systems. The Village Board had previously approved a development agreement with Merge Urban Development, and Merge right now actually is in the process of getting the CSM, or Certified Survey Map, reviewed and approved to combine the two parcels of land into one to facilitate the development of the site. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, but I should just kind of mention the recommended conditions of approval, which were also recommended for approval by Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission. So I'll just list those off. Review of the climbing gym exterior to be submitted separately for site plan review. Coordinate with Public Works and Forestry regarding feasibility proposed planter beds along Mike McCarthy Way. All metal wall panels are to use fully concealed fasteners. Then catch-all, meeting all their applicable requirements of 17-2-200 and other Village codes from engineering. Review coordinate restriping of parking stalls on the roadway. Since there is a new driveway on Mike McCarthy Way, the odd street parking lot to be restriped. There's a request for, we need to review the stormwater management information. It will be tributary to our Ashland Pond, so we'll be buying into that. From Public Safety, make sure the driveline pull-around through around the buildings provides a turnaround for emergency vehicles. Work with Public Safety on possible relocation of fire department connection to the Mike McCarthy side of the building, in the front. And then provide private fire hydrants for the 400-foot lay-down distance requirement. From Forestry, provide a detailed planting schedule with scientific and common names of proposed plantings for review and approval by Forestry. Provide detailed planting diagrams for all landscaped areas. And then condition that the owner will be responsible for all plant material planted in the right of way, with the understanding the Village will not be held responsible for damage caused as a result of normal operations. And make sure that the maximum height for the plants is no greater than 30 inches. Bike and Ped was very happy to see that there is interior bicycle parking. They did request bicycle parking near the main entrance, some sort of rack or to that effect, consistent with the American Association of Professional Bicyclists. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Otherwise, representatives of Merge are also online.
What I said about, you know, this has been at site plan, it's been at Plan Board, and now here at Village Board. It's a beautiful building, and I like the fact that it's all masonry. It's, you know, will look really nice for a long time. I really like the design of it, so.
Well, I think the project is good. We got another empty lot, or I should say acreage, that is being filled by, like you said, Mary, a nice-looking building. The architect is very nice fitting. Hopefully, the area will bring more customers coming into the area. There's a large parcel that is going to be developed, the one across the street, we're hoping on something. There's some more land there that could be used for further development, so I think it fits well. And like I said, we're getting another nice structure, so. Any question, or any, if no more questions, I'll move to approve the Merge Urban Development Building Number One on McCarthy Way.
With conditions, Gary?
With conditions.
Okay.
Staff, excuse me.
The area, that's more a plaza area.
I need a second before we discuss it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gary Paul and a second by Trustee Williams. Okay, further discussion?
Just had a question on the front, the area that fronts Mike McCarthy. It sounds like it's more of a public area that they have there. What is all planned in there? It's not real clear on the plans that have been set yet? Because the storefront, I assume, is the commercial on the base there, so then they're encouraging people to come into that area?
Right, yep. It'll be a, I guess, a quasi-public area, privately held but open to the public. There'll be a series of planters, benches, things like that, more of a kind of a gathering, gathering space for people.
Nice. And then the stormwater part of it, it sounds like they are going to buy into the Ashland Pond.
Correct, that'll handle the quality aspect of it, and then quantity, they're going to deal with some underground storage.
I was just gonna ask that, so they are going to put in underground storage as well, and then that will sit and then go on to the pond from there?
Correct.
Okay, any more questions, discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. 11H, Consider/Discuss Act Resolution R. 1-2-21 Adopting a Tax Increment Financing Policy and Application Process. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, members of the board. Adopting Resolution 1-2-21 effectively will establish a written policy that Village staff can use in evaluating and providing some gating criteria, if you will, for tax incremental financing assistance for private development, at which point then that information would get forwarded on to the Village Board for ultimate approval. It should be noted that the application packet that you have before you, in fact, was a document, by much extent was approved by the Village Board back in 2011. But by and large, over a period of time, it has ceased to be used. Beyond that, after some discussions that we had with the Village Board back in December as we were evaluating TIF assistance, it's become apparent that it would be important for us to establish this policy to create these guidelines for us to use in evaluating assistance, and then ultimately allowing you to make an informed best-case financial decision as it relates to incentives to be provided. Now statutes do provide certain elements within what we can provide assistance for, and the policy guide and the packet is consistent with statutory standards. We did review this internally as a team, so Erin, Greg, Tony, and I essentially went through and established some of these objectives and criteria that are included in the packet. And then beyond that, we did reach out to our municipal neighbors as well to identify what criteria they use in order for us to be and remain competitive. As I mentioned, ultimately, the Village Board will retain the prerogative to make decisions as it relates to the incentive. But as we go through it, and as staff meets with private developers that are seeking assistance, these will be more or less that gating criteria that we could use that establishes a framework of which you will use to evaluate whether assistance is given. So a couple of quick things that I want to kind of touch on as far as the criteria is concerned, because I think they're important to note. So if you go into your packet, it would be on page 155 in your entire board packet, but there are these several lists of criteria for TIF assistance. The first one is an equity requirement. So in this particular case, a developer needs to provide at least 15% equity into the project, meaning the dollars that they bring forward to the project must be unleveraged. And that is the bare bones minimum. And ideally, what that does is it just proves that there's some solvency within the organization that's looking to develop the project. It gives us some sense of security, if you will, that this isn't a fly-by-night developer, that this is someone that has done these types of projects before and has cash on hand to back it up. The 50% rule is consistent with prior policy that was adopted back in 2011. And essentially, what that means is that no more than 50% of the net present value of that project, or that is generated from that project, can be used as an incentive. So if you look back at some of the prior projects, we've provided incentives greater than that 50%. So that, again, is a prerogative and a decision the board would need to make, but our baseline is no more than 50%. That ensures that at least 50% of that net present value goes back and stays in the tax incremental finance district. The payback period is based on the lifespan of the TID, but ultimately, no more than 20 years. Ideally, we want a payback period of 10 years or under. Generally speaking, if we are bonding or borrowing for a project to help leverage a project, that's going to be based on a 10-year payback, and we want to make sure that aligns. But we may have situations where a project comes in towards the end life of that tax incremental finance district, and we want to guarantee that we are not making payments to that after the expiration of that district. The TIF cap is the total amount of TIF assistance, where we should not exceed 25% of the total project cost. So again, if I have a million-dollar project that I'm bringing to the TID, and I'm seeking assistance, no more than 25% of that overall project cost, or $250,000 would be eligible for that particular project. You can start to see that there may be some contradictions in the criteria, but those contradictions are by and large put into place based on the fact that certain projects might be million-dollar projects, and other projects might be $100 million projects. And we want to make sure that we're in line with the level of risk that's associated. We are looking for self-supporting projects, and ultimately, what that identifies is that no increment from other private development projects within the district, or even other districts, should be used to supplement that project's inability to make up. And so we had that conversation before about, you know, could we take from TID number three to support TID five, or so on and so forth? And under this policy criteria, we would say no. It needs to be self-supporting within its own district. Land assembly cap, so sometimes, especially in rehabilitation-type TIDs, we're in the process of assembling land. And many times, a developer may be assembling land privately, and then they're seeking reimbursement for that, that cost of that land. Well, we weren't a part of that negotiation, and we don't know if that individual paid more than the fair market value of that. And so what we want to guarantee is that we're not going to pay more than 10% over the fair market value in the event that that developer overpaid for that piece of property. The internal rate of return, what we're looking there from that perspective is there's a baseline of profitability that a developer's looking to achieve from a project. And typically, I think we talked about that a typical developer is looking for at least 16% of rate of return on their particular project. And what this policy says is, we understand that, a private developer's looking to make money, but in order to support that effort, long-term investment, there needs to be some financial help on the front end. But ultimately, what we don't want is that this developer become very rich by the project and has a rate of return above 30%. So this has to be still a viable project from that standpoint. The taxable increase should result in an increase in taxable valuation of at least 20% of the base value upon the project. Again, ultimately, you're creating this tax incremental finance district. You have a base value of, let's say, $1 million. And then this project comes in and only increases the value of that property by $200,000. That would be kind of that baseline minimum for us to consider incentive. So we would want more than that 20% over that base value to ensure that we are getting a solid rate of return when the tax incremental finance district closes. And so those are, again, basically the gating criteria that we will use. So as an application comes in, this form is a very thorough process, of which we learn more about the company. We have a thorough analysis of their pro forma. We would take this information and either A, we would internally evaluate that, or we would B, send this on to another party like a Baird or an Ellers, who is an independent review agency for those incentives, especially if it's a very complex project or a high-value project. We may end up sending that to a third-party consultant to give us an evaluation. By having these criteria, that's the information that we will use to evaluate and that our consultant would use to evaluate, to ultimately provide to you a recommendation for consideration. Again, the board having full prerogative to meander in and out of the guidelines that are established here. Although not necessarily identified in the packet, this was some conversation that we had most recently in December, is that when we have these discussions about incentive for tax incremental financing, these are competitive negotiations, and it would be important for us to negotiate those in closed session. And then when a decision and a conclusion or consensus is made, then we would make that announcement in open session. But there's a lot of give and take as it relates to competitively negotiating the value of the incentive, and those, again, should be done in closed sessions so that we can have those free and fair discussions. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Joel, I think this is very necessary, and I'm glad to hear there was something in 2011 that had actually been drawn up like this. But I think maybe where that fell down is we don't have somebody who's responsible to actually report how is each project lining up with this criteria. Who do you see as the responsibility to get that information back to the board to be able to make a valid decision based on them? Yeah, it can, you know, we still can decide the way we wish, but I think this criteria is great, but we need somebody to evaluate against it and say, hey, this one's over this criteria, or this is below. And who do you see being the responsible person to get that information back to the board?
Sure. Ultimately, you know, looking at those eight criteria that we had established, of those eight, maybe about two of those existed in the prior policy from 2011. And that was the 50-50 rule, and then the but-for example, obviously, is important. So we did add some components to that from a criteria standpoint. From a process point of view, development is generally coming through Erin and his department, through community development. And so a lot of the pre-submittals and the pre-application meetings, those are occurring through community development. And in most cases, you know, we don't necessarily bring up TIF assistance, but if a developer comes in and says, is this location within a TID? And can we receive incentive? Well, that triggers Erin and his staff to say, well, we do have a policy if this gets adopted. Here are the criteria that we will use to evaluate, here's the application materials. Complete those, submit those to my department. And then at that point, it becomes kind of a team effort between Erin, Greg, myself, and Tony. We're reviewing that criteria and the application materials. If it is a complex project, or maybe a project that is abnormal to a typical development, then at that point, we may reach out to our financial consultants at Baird, or to Ellers, or whomever, to provide that independent review. We may even do that at times where, you know, it's kind of right on the cusp. But based on our internal analysis, we're a little unsure that they're going to meet some of the criteria, and to confirm that they are or are not, then we would also look to maybe send that out to our third-party consultant to give that confirmation.
Okay, so is this an actual process that's written that you guys are going to follow? Or is, I get that that's what you would like to do. My concern is, is going forward, can we get that down as an actual process that's going to happen on every project?
I believe that's outlined in the packet itself, that this is how the applications go out, this is who receives them. Here are the individuals that are going to be reviewing the materials and assembling the recommendations, and then it ultimately will make its way to the Village Board. In the packet, we identify that does take some time, so between two and four weeks before we kind of get through the full process. Ultimately, there's other aspects to it. When a TID request comes in, generally speaking, it's coming in with a site plan or a rezoning application, or something to that effect. And so staff will be working through all those elements simultaneously so that at the end of the day, when the project gets approved, all the approvals are met and necessary at the end.
And I think what I would like to see is a very simple report back, because we always get a packet of material when that happens, that shows these eight criteria, and here's how you've evaluated against each one of those eight. That would make it extremely helpful for us when we look at, when we look at the project then.
And that was our intent, as well. And that was our intent as well. When we draft the staff report, we would list those criteria, and it's basically a yes or no answer.
That'd be great.
Yes, no, that type of thing.
Well, some of them, I think, might be, okay, it's not 20 years, it's 25 years or something, you know. At least give us the information, be able to understand how is it not meeting the criteria or how is it below the criteria that, you know, the levels that we'd set. That'd just be extremely helpful. It's just communication.
There are some elements here, too, that, as we have worked on these projects in the past, that aren't necessarily within the criteria but may provide some importance to the village, in particular, job creation. So we don't have it as a measurable criteria, but you may forego a certain criteria measure if, in the event that it creates X number of jobs. And so as developers come in and they make those pitches and those recommendations, we'll make sure that they point those areas out so maybe they have a weakness in their application because a certain criteria isn't met, but there's another strength in their project that should be identified and presented to the board for consideration.
Any other questions?
I think you guys did a great job on the application packet. It looks really good, so I appreciate you putting that in place. And I agree with Jay. I think it's a tough decision to go ahead with a project and provide TIF to any development in the community. And to have as much information from you folks with the expertise and knowledge would be great, and to have it in a way that we can look at and go, okay, we see where this meets it and where it doesn't would be much appreciated.
I'd have to agree with what Tracy has put forward and what Jay has indicated as well. These TIF projects and the approval process, they're all different, but you need to have a policy, you need to have a guideline to give you some direction as we go forward. I would prefer that that 50% be on the extreme, and I know we've gone over that 50% apparently in the past. I think that's something we need to really take a close look at as we review these TIF projects. And, you know, you're correct, there's four heads are better than one, you, Greg, Aaron, and Tony. You guys are the wheelhouse on these economic development projects, and the more feedback we can get from you, the better. And don't be afraid to tap Ellers or Baird or others as we go forward with these things. And I'm glad to see this put together. I think it's a good guideline to use as we go forward. And again, a good job on that, and we appreciate that from a village board perspective.
Any more discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we implement the tax increment financing assistance policy and application as presented for use by the village board in future evaluations of TIF projects.
And I will second that.
Yeah, we have a motion by trustee Kabaki, a second by trustee Krieger to approve resolution R.1-2-21. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11I, strategic plan introduction. Joel?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Again, just a quick presentation, this information was included in your packet, so I'll kind of go through some of the slide material here briefly. And our intent tonight isn't necessarily to create any action, but just essentially to introduce to you a strategic planning process that we would like to partake in as we move forward here with some new staff and new board members. We feel that it would be an important topic to discuss and to initiate to help provide some direction and some vision for our organization. For those of you that haven't done strategic planning in the past, I look at it as a working, breathing, living document and not necessarily a document, per se, that is prepared and then placed on the shelf, but more of a process document. And the idea behind that is that it's always evolving, it's always improving, and it's always changing based on the needs of the organization. Balanced Scorecard is an organization that does some type of strategy planning and thinking, and they define strategic planning as an effort to set priorities, focus energy and resources, strengths in our operations, and to ensure that all of us, employees and our key stakeholders, are working towards a common goal. Generally speaking, there are four focus areas that they look at when developing a strategic plan. And those four focus areas are financial, so we want to look at how our operations are affecting us in our finances. Generally speaking, on the private side, you would say customers, but because we're on the public side, we're talking about our citizens and stakeholders, and they're our customers, and we want to make sure that they are satisfied and that they are engaged and involved in the government process here. If you want to review our internal processes, so are we being efficient? Are we being effective? Everything that we do, kind of hitting those strides. And then from an organizational development standpoint, that's kind of more the human element, so the human resources, the culture, are we really working towards a very effective workforce? As I mentioned before, the strategic planning process is, again, not a planned document that sits on a shelf, but this evolutionary, continuous improvement endeavor. And ultimately, it takes into account all facets of the organization, whether you're in leadership and governance, such as the village board, or you're on the management side, such as our department heads and supervisors, or if you're staff that are delivering the services to the community, whether you're a lifeguard or you're a refuse and recycling collection operator. All those individuals within each of those segments play a vital role in the overall process of strategic planning. Our leadership and governance people, those individuals, you're focused on vision creation, the mission alignment, you're motivating, you're inspiring, you're kind of creating the values of the organization. The management folks, they're working on planning and budgeting, organizing and staffing, controlling and problem-solving throughout the organization. And then obviously, service delivery people are the ones actually delivering it. And it's important that that communication rotates throughout the entire organization. We, as management, really strive to hear and understand from our service delivery people what is happening on the streets, if you will, what's happening in our programs, what's happening in our services? Is there anything that we can do to improve efficiency or effectiveness? And when we hear that back from those individuals, we report back to the village board ultimately, right? When we're preparing our program budgets and you see proposals for new services or increased funding or change in operations, those, by and large, are happening because we're hearing it either from the people delivering the service or from the residents ourselves. And as elected officials, as you're going door-to-door and getting petitions signed for appearing on a ballot or meeting with your constituents, you're also hearing things. And you're hearing how well we're doing or how we can improve in certain areas. And that information eventually filters down to our service delivery people as well. And that's all part of that strategy, of that continuous improvement and continuous communication. I look at strategic planning, and I kind of call it strategic planning light. Ultimately, there's kind of four things that we need to do as part of the planning process. And those four things are inventorying, so we need to identify what we have. We need to formulate, so what do we really need ultimately? After we've formulated our plan, we need to implement it. And then, over the course of that planning exercise, we need to evaluate the effectiveness of it. So inventorying, formulating, implementing, and evaluating. Through that inventorying phase, what we plan and propose to do is do both internal and external analysis. And some of you may have heard of the term SWOT analysis, the acronym for identifying your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And so we want to provide an internal review of our strengths and weaknesses, an external review of any opportunities that exist in our community or society, and any threats also that affect us as an organization. In order to help us with this, we're proposing doing some type of online community survey where we would provide an external point of view of how our programs and services are perceived. And we would look to do something similar to this, maybe on an annual basis, just to do some performance management. And then we would look to do some internal staff survey. And what we're looking to do is try to find ways that we can become more effective and efficient in the delivery of our services, not so much a morale feeler, but we want to know from them, how can we improve the delivery of the services to our community? And so the internal survey from staff will help guide that effort. Ultimately, we want to, as we continue the inventorying process, identify what issues and opportunities we want to address over a period of several years, typically five. And there's an activity that we would do that's called the Start/Stop/Continue exercise. And ultimately, the start component of that activity is what should we have in place or what should we do to improve our organization tomorrow? What should we start doing? The stop is what's not working. There may be a service that we should no longer provide, it's ineffective, it's inefficient, and so what should we stop doing? And then what are those elements that are important? We're doing them now, and we want to make sure that we continue to do those and continue to improve upon them. As a part of this exercise also, we want to identify some key elements. We want to become a mission-driven organization. In order to do that, we need to identify who we are, and the core values are basically are just that. They are our beliefs, our principles that kind of help guide the organization, and they ultimately are shared not only between members of the board but also staff. So when we talk about compassion and empathy and leadership and integrity, if those are values that we identify as being core to us, then they should be core to all of us within the organization regardless of where you sit. And then we also need to identify our mission. You know, what is our business? And let's be specific about it. And it should be an element or a statement that is easily recitable to everyone in the organization. Why are we here? What is our business? And ultimately, that will help us become that mission-driven organization. In a prior life, I worked for the YMCA. The YMCA prides itself in being a mission-driven organization. And at the time, the executive director had his, what he called the Silver Dollar Challenge. And he would come up to any employee within the organization and ask that employee, what is our mission? And if the employee could recite the mission, he'd give him the silver dollar. And it didn't matter if it was a camp counselor, a lifeguard, or the executive center director at a branch location. Everybody got questioned on what our mission is. And ultimately, that's what we should strive to do as well. Our vision is obviously, where do we want our business or where do we want to go? What do we want to become? As an organization, I think it's important for us to have an end goal in mind. We're always working and striving to hit that achievement. So ultimately, what I would like to do and what I'm proposing for the board tonight and just kind of more or less getting kind of a general consent, is to begin the process of creating that strategic plan. And as I mentioned, there's kind of four basic steps, and we would take those four steps and break them down over a series of events. And the first four events that we would like to establish are these strategic planning retreats or workshops, if you will, where we would have members of the village board and members of our staff get together and begin to formulate and work through some of those key elements. So the inventorying, the SWOT analysis, developing the surveys, both for external and internal customers. We want to identify what issues and opportunities we want to address, do that Start/Stop/Continue exercise. And then ultimately, what we're looking to do as a group is to develop our mission, our vision, and core values. From there, we want to identify ultimately four, five, maybe no more than six, broad-ranging goals that are going to basically cover the planning period that we're going to review and evaluate. At that point, once those are established, then what we'll do is we'll take that information back to our staff, and then internally, we will prepare objectives and action steps that relate to achieving those goals, at which point, we would bring that information back to the board, and then the board, hopefully at that point, will have buy-in, and we will ultimately have a strategic plan to be working from. And then as we prepare our budget and as we end out the calendar year, we will establish and adopt a performance management program or a balanced scorecard, if you will, to be able to evaluate the effectiveness of our efforts towards meeting the action steps and the objectives of the plan. So again, next steps, if the village board is in agreement, what I'd like to do is schedule a series of workshops. I anticipate, depending on how efficient we are, it could be anywhere between two and four sessions. We could do those certainly here at village hall, we could even go to the community center and do them offsite, or maybe go to another location. Please bear in mind that these will still be publicly noticed meetings, so, you know, by and large, members of the public can certainly come and listen and participate that way. Beyond that, through these workshops, what we'd like to do is prepare that citizen survey. So we'll have a review of the questions and the format of that survey, and then we'll do the same for that internal staff survey as well. Upon approval by the board, we'll distribute those elements to the public and to staff and start receiving information from those areas. During a workshop, we'll develop that mission, vision, and core values and those long-term goals. Generally speaking, that'll happen over a one-to-two work session period. And then from there, staff are going to work through those strategic objectives and action steps and then ultimately provide those back to the board for approval. So again, tonight, what we're looking for from the board is a general consent that that is something that you feel is worthwhile, and then if so, we'll work together in establishing that next set and series of meetings and workshops. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
First of all, Joel, I think this is extremely important for the village. Any corporation, any organization needs to have this information in order to kind of direct it, kind of keep its guidance. It ends up being an umbrella. I have taken part in a number of these, and they've always proved out to be very positive because it kind of level sets everybody and what everybody's doing from all the departments as well as within the community, I can see being extremely helpful. When somebody comes to the village saying, hey, I want to develop something in the village, you now have documents that you can hand out and say, well, here's our mission. And I would think that that would be part of that mission as to why we want you to come to our village. And our vision is the reason why we want you to be here. So I think all of this kind of funnels together to really give us, as an organization, a direction that we need. So I applaud you that stepping forward to propose this.
And I think it's important to have the pulse of the community, and in today's world, things change so rapidly. It's almost like you've got jet engines on your tail. That being said, I think this is a good first step, and we've had a lot of changes here, be it Title Town, be it the riverfront, be it the mall and other things. And we routinely have to go out there and find out what our citizens want and also what we want and define that so that we are all on the same page, staff and elected officials and appointed officials, for that matter. So that being said, I echo Jay's thoughts that this is the route to go, and let's get on with this.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea as well. Question for you, Joel, do you envision doing this in-house? You facilitating this or contracting for someone to come in and be the facilitator for the process?
Yeah, good question. I foresee helping facilitate this so internally, and the reason for that is two reasons. One, I've done it before with other organizations, so I feel confident and comfortable doing it. And then, second, being new to the organization, I don't necessarily have as much biases, if you will, of the organization or preconceived notions about how the organization has run or should run. So I still view myself as very independent from that standpoint, and I feel that I could be an independent mediator, facilitator because of that. If I had been here for a number of years, I would certainly recommend maybe considering bringing an outside consultant to assist in providing that independence, if you will, in the process.
The reason I kind of like what you're going through here is by the time it gets through your in-house committees, your people that you've got here, we, as the trustees, get a lot of questions that sometimes we don't know how to answer. I think by the time you get it to us and the public is kind of aware of it, we will have some answers that are intelligent answers that, well, maybe I can find out for you. So I know it's going to take you some time to get this thing rolling, but... So I know it's going to take you some time to get this thing rolling, but, you know, it's one of the better things I've seen here since I've been around here to have the organization involved in this, and we all know what base we're on that way.
We've had so many changes, especially in the last year and a half, that I think this is a good, a good plan to have. I know when Joel and I met, that was one of the things we discussed, was getting together, having a strategic plan, so.
How long do you envision the process taking, Joel?
Depending on how quickly we can meet collectively as a group, you know, if we meet every two weeks to once a month, just to focus on this particular topic, getting through those first kind of four steps would probably be three, four months, let's say. And then after that, it'll take some time as staff to develop those action steps and those objectives. Ultimately, my goal is to try to have this done sometime towards the middle or end of summer, because I think it'll tie into the budgeting process as well, because we'll start to identify what our priorities are, and that may influence how we budget and spend resources next year.
And I know, Joel, you've been through this before, but my recommendation would be, from my experience, is like doing the SWOT analysis and that, that kind of gets done. We shouldn't spread that out over weeks. That should be kind of almost back-to-back days type of thing, that you hammer that, that beginning part out. Otherwise, there's too much time between, they have to rehash, and it'd be better just to kind of block off a couple days, get that done. I've experienced that, and that seems to work much better than trying to spread it out. I mean, I think the next steps after that, when you're starting to create those next documents, I think those you can spread out over weeks, but I think that initial SWOT analysis, to try to come up with those strengths and weaknesses, you know, I think that really needs to be done in a very concise time period.
Well, with that, I'd make a motion to direct staff and administration to undertake the strategic planning efforts as laid forth and outlined in the documents presented to us by administration.
Second.
I do have a question. So for the SWOT analysis, is that an individual, like, are you going to use, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding, are we the SWOT analysis?
No, what we'll end up doing is we'll have a facilitated discussion to work through each of the four elements of SWOT. So ultimately, there'll be a group setting where we'll have mixing of board and staff members, working through different exercises to identify what those strengths, weaknesses, opportunity, and threats are.
Okay.
And then collectively, after we've gone through it, there'll be a debriefing, if you will, that will bring everybody and their ideas back together, and then we'll collectively work through and identify what those key ones are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Allison, in many cases, what happens here is you sit in a room with a bunch of sticky notes, and you write down all these things-
Yep.
-and start plopping them up on the boards and that, and it ends up being a, it actually ends up being a kind of a fun process when you're doing it, too.
Yeah, I've been a part of SWOTs before. I was just concerned, because if it was the board, and we wanted to look at back-to-back days, I was thinking, I don't know how quickly I would be available for back-to-back days.
Yep.
I would be interested, of course, in being a part of it, but I just didn't know if it was the board, or if it was a mixture, or what, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to direct staff to go forward with this plan. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11J, Action on Committee Appointment. So with Patrick Moynihan moving on to the county clerk position, he no longer will be a representative as a voting member of the Room Tax Commission. So Chris Teske, who is our clerk, took his position. I would like to appoint her as a voting member of the Room Tax Commission.
Need approval on that, Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Gary Paul, seconded by Jay Krieger, to recommend approval of the committee appointment of Chris Teske. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Twelve items for next agenda. I don't know if we have any right now, but if anybody has anything, give the office a call, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Gary Paul, seconded by Tracy Flueke, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are done.
Did you just say that? When you were telling me, how many board meetings do you have? Stay out to the corner, and you said like, fuck you, night? How was it, dollars, to hold those board meetings virtually? I'm like, that?